Recording has started.
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to call the November 25th, 2024, regular meeting of the Bethel Inland Wetlands Commission to Order. The time is 7:03 PM. Let's start with introductions. I'm going to start with the commission members in attendance. Let's start up on Zoom. Kevin, sir?
Kevin Seaman, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Nico Jordan, Commissioner, Vice Chair.
Pat Perreford, Hall today.
Danielle Monroe, oh my goodness, Chairwoman. And also joining us tonight, Amanda.
Amanda Martinez, Recording Secretary.
Dave McCallum, Inland Wetlands Agent.
Thank you so much.
And we also have Attorney.
We also have joining us, yes.
Chuck Andrews, Attorney for the Commission.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. All right. Does anyone have any amendments to the agenda or unlisted items that we wanted to add tonight?
Madam Vice, or Madam Chair, I'm sorry. There is one item that I have to add. It is invoice for Vice Chairman Jordan. He attended the Kekiwak Annual Conference on November 16th. And he would like to have reimbursement for his education fees.
Okay, so we're going to put that under the business meeting?
That's correct.
I'm not even going to try to spell Kekiwak correctly as I pen that in.
That's okay.
Okay. Any other amendments or changes? All right, hearing none. Let's see. Do we need to add in the special?
Oh, yes, we do. I'm sorry. That's why I totally blinted on it. I knew I did. So the Commission wasn't able to vote on the special meeting minutes for October 26th of the last meeting because those weren't filed. They have been filed. So if the Commission wants to consider those, I think they're able to do that tonight.
Is that already, that's already on here? Oh, here I see that. We go. Got it. Okay, yes. We don't need a motion to add these things? We need a motion to add both of those things in today's agenda?
We need motions and votes.
All right, so let's do them individually, I guess. Okay. Do I hear a motion to amend the agenda tonight to include the invoice for Nico attending Kekiwak?
So moved.
Second? Second? Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so it's unanimous and motion passes. Do I hear a motion to amend the agenda tonight to include approval of the Sidewalk Special Meeting Minutes from October 26th?
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Unanimous.
Aye, sir.
Thank you. All right, let me just see. Okay, looks like we're good then. Nothing else, nothing further? I didn't have discussion on those. Did we have discussion on those?
Appreciate it, Ford. No, I'm sure.
All right, moving to old business. We have 107 Plum Trees Road.
I sent Audrey Favreau, Agent Approval Application. I'm hoping to hear back from her for the December 9th meeting. But she has all the paperwork she needs.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay, that ends old business. Moving to new business, number nine, Plutnum Road. Fill the two by two area of possible poorly drained soils at location of an old above-ground pool. Submitted on 9/18/2024.
Okay, Madam Chair, the Commission remembers they closed the public hearing for this application at their last meeting in October. Mr. Perreford, were you able to review all the?
Yes, I reviewed it fully online. Yes, I reviewed all the information.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. And Madam Chair, you may want to seat Mr. Perreford.
Oh, yes.
So that he can participate.
I definitely do. I forgot that you're an alternate. I absolutely do. Thank you for that. At this time, I would like to see Mr. Perreford for Laura Ferguson.
Sure.
Thank you so much. Did you get that, Amanda? Okay.
Yes, I got it.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to be distributing a draft resolution of approval. So there are, there are, there are. Kevin, you were at the last meeting too, correct?
Yes, I was.
Okay, cool. So I'm distributing you draft, you draft. And I'm going to bring it up here on the screen shortly.
I have it in the emails, so I'm going to read it on that. But if anybody else needs to scroll, feel, go for it.
I think it's just good to have it scroll for the record, Kevin.
Oh, good call, good call. I'll be reading it on over here.
Making sure that he doesn't read it using how it does. That's helpful.
Oh, that's right. It doesn't help that I don't have. Oh, yeah. Okay. There we go. Yeah, let's pull this up on the screen. Okay, can everybody see this?
Yes.
See if I can see now a little bit more. There we go.
Dave?
Yes.
You good? Do you have it going? Yeah, I'm good. So on page two, right above the performance guidelines.
Okay.
You have upon a vote of blank in favor, blank opposed, blank in abstention. Should that be filled in?
That will be filled in when the Commission takes their vote.
Oh, I thought this was, I'm sorry, I misread it. I thought it was on the closing of the section.
Can I ask a question? I had a thought. The, did we really, I guess, points of information. Did we really open the public hearing on October 28th and close the hearing on October 28th?
Yes.
In fact, it's just such a long meeting that it felt like last month.
Okay.
Right.
Anybody have any questions? Evening. How you doing?
Even.
How are you?
Good.
My question is, did you?
Did you come up with the ruling for number one of the page three? The Commission finds second-to-last paragraph from?
Most of the language I said there is pretty broadly played. You got.
This is also broadly played, yeah. The Commission finds the filling of the outside area poorly drained or well in soils will not have a significant adverse impact on the critical flood storage capacity of off-site area.
Well, that's, that's, that's specific for this application, but the language that surrounds it, yes.
Yeah. So just as a point of discussion, this might claim, yeah, I want to put on the record. My decision or my thought process in this, and I will vote for approval of filling in this area. In my process, none of the information, and I wanted to clear for it that wetlands of two property over filtered into my decision-making.
Okay.
As in the past, we've never have had where we go two properties over to find a wetland and identify.
All right, so this is, this is a distinction that I would like to make, Mr. Perreford. The, the number of properties doesn't make a difference.
No, no, I don't care between next.
It's the distance.
But have we ever, except one time, I can think of, gone to a neighbor's property and said, there's wetlands there that's going to affect this property?
Forty-two Nashville Road and nine Good, uh, uh, nine Good Hill Road and four Aunt Patty's Lane West. Actually, yes, four Aunt Patty's Lane.
And had them marked out.
Yes, the wetlands were flagged.
Okay, I am going by the, that we whatever enters a property has to enter is the same and whatever leaves the property is the same. That's the guideline I'm going by on that. So when we're talking, like, first of all, I don't think the upland review area had, for those wetland, anything to do with this permit because it's away from the hundred foot to begin with. But I don't want to start setting a precedent. Anytime someone looks at getting a permit, they have to go on their neighbor's property to identify if there's wetlands or not wetlands.
Right.
That's, and I don't want to start having that discussion today. I just want to let my point of view know that that's how I'm filtering. I'm sure there'll be a lot more conversation about it going forward.
Right.
And I don't wish to drag it out or even, I just want to let you know, this is my process and thinking that I, I, the, the process has always been we can approve a permit if the flow or if it's coming off the property is different. And that's what protects the surrounding wetlands.
Right, so I, I'm not, not to.
Because I could think of a lot of permits in this town where they should have came in front of us then.
I, I will, what I will say is there do not appear to be any activities that are going to take place within that area. If for some reason the application becomes revised without effect, there's a condition in here that, that addresses that.
Right, and I, what I'm saying is I don't 100% agree with that condition either. I will approve it as written. But there's other permits in this town that should have came in front of the wetland board if we're starting to worry about wetlands off-site.
It's wetlands that are within 100 feet, Pat.
Okay, but it's, have we, have we held that consistent across the board in every application?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
Or maybe we should say to the Commission's knowledge.
Correct, absolutely, to the Commission's knowledge.
Okay, so, and again, I don't want to go into the whole thing, but so when the applicant comes in, they want to build a shed. Is that applicant now responsible to go, let's say it's on the edge of his property, whatever the five fifteen feet, whatever it is? Are they responsible now to go 85 feet into the neighbor's property looking to see if there's wetlands? And having to identify them as wetlands? And then what if the neighbor says, you're not coming on my property?
Right, so.
It just opens a whole lot of work cans or whatever. And I just want to let you know my state of thought on this, and I'm sure it'll be future conversation.
That's, that's understood.
Yeah.
The installation of a shed, which, as you all know, I typically process as an administrative agent approval.
I'm usually a shed example.
Right, but that's, that's happening within an area that's, that's already established and we'll, and we do our best to work with nothing that we have to figure out where wetlands are and are not.
Okay, so again, I'm sure it's going to be a lot bigger conversation distinction, but I, I'm, I'm going to have to look at those ones we looked at.
Sure.
I know of one that we, we knew there were wetlands next to the property because it was a swamp.
Okay.
Only consideration we gave to that swamp, besides what was flowing off the property, it had to equal the same, was disturbance alike. That was the only consideration we gave to that wetlands law. Because whatever was on the property prior had to be the same as after.
Okay.
And I remember the only restriction we gave on that property, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the, I know where it is, I don't remember the address, was the applicant couldn't use certain lights on the back of his buildings that would reflect into the wetlands.
Wasn't that?
What was the address?
Wasn't that the one that borders the Wolf's Preserve?
The address doesn't, it doesn't make a difference.
Sorry? Yeah, good hill.
The address doesn't make a difference.
Right, right. So again, I'm sure it's going to be a lot bigger conversation.
I'm sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
I was asking about the address because if Pat's memory is that we did or didn't approach it in a certain way, then for our own review, we could go back as a Commission and look at that and see if we need to consider how we're approaching applications to be consistent.
Sure.
Right.
That's why I was asking for the address because otherwise I don't know where to look to find what we.
I mean, as far as the filling of this, I don't have a concern. I don't believe there was a pool constructed there. Because just the trees and the ditch and all that, I believe there probably was garbage from a pool there. Maybe it was collapsed at the time and pushed there or something. But I don't see the one pool there, but I don't think that little area that, they're not even sure if it was a wetland because they're having soil scientists, our soil, I couldn't find anything in the notes in the SLR. SLR didn't look at that wetland. Under, unless I missed it, they, they looked at the neighbor's property.
Right, right.
Which the town asked them to do. We've never done that before. Have we ever had, have we ever sent a representative of town?
I, I clarified this. The Commission accepted the application. The applicant was made aware, out of, at a, at a public hearing for the planning and zoning correction, that there was a concern from an, a budding property owner that there was a wetland or intermittent water course feature on their property.
Right.
And we addressed it to the applicant and the applicant did not follow through to investigate that. Okay, so.
All right, again, I'm sure it's going to be a longer conversation at some point when we look at the regulations and everything, but as far as I'm concerned here, I'm fine with filling in that two square foot area. I don't think it'll have a negative impact. I think a lot of these boilerplates here, again, this is for, this is just for filling in that hole.
Right, that's correct.
Like, I don't send them in control. I don't picture them regrading the whole. I picture a couple bags of dirt.
The reason why that comment was up on their part was because there was an E N S control note on the wetland sheet.
Okay, that's fine. No, I'm fine that they're on there. I just, you know, I think we need to understand that they're at some point, they're going to have to do sediment control and all that if they build.
That's right.
But I, I wouldn't expect, you know, them to put steel fence around the whole property because they're going to fill in a two-foot hole. That's all I'm saying.
If.
Within reason.
Right, if the plans need to be changed, then that'll be worked out.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Yep.
More discussion? Kevin says he's good.
I'm okay.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, this, just I think that that raises a little bit of, like, some concern, just the fact that even who's been on this Commission for a long time, you know, doesn't, that has question marks, at least about how or when or what our jurisdiction is or what, how something comes before us to begin with, like how and whose responsibility that is and how to go about doing that. The fact that, to me, it seems that, that there is, that that's not setting an precedent because that we have a clear in our regulations, one hundred foot upland review area mandated for any wetland that falls within 100 feet of limited disturbance of any application, development application that comes before the building department or planning and zoning, that, that should trigger it to come to us.
There, there are.
The question is, as Pat brings up, or Commission Perreford brought up, is that how, are there even, as we've never written in his words.
No, this, this is, this is a good question. Yeah.
That we get all of that.
This is a good question. There are application requirements that are spelled out for all land use boards, planning and zoning, Inland Wetlands Zone Board of Appeals, if the Inland Wetlands Commission for future discussion wants to review how those application requirements work, I think, I think that would be a very productive conversation for you all to have. Absolutely.
Dave, we were talking about an upcoming meeting, you and I, that has a light agenda.
Yeah.
Is that next month?
Yes.
Would you mind making a note that maybe we could review that, that meeting, so that everyone is?
Yeah, I, I want to stay at the task at hand for this.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
More discussion around this application?
No, as long as that kind of touches this, I, you know, I give it that.
That's more of a, an in-house procedural conversation about making sure that we all understand how that's supposed to function, but do you have any more discussion about this application that we have on the table? Okay, Kevin, I heard you say you're good on discussing this application.
I'm good. I apologize. I'm, I keep myself on mute so you don't get an echo too much. So if I ever talk and you don't hear me, just let me know.
Much appreciated. I just want to make sure that your voice is heard in the meeting.
Of course.
And I do want to acknowledge, as we mentioned when we did our introduction, that Attorney Andrews is here, so this is your last opportunity to address any questions to our legal counsel who's here. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Is that good?
Oh, absolutely.
Nico? Okay. So it seems that we've had our discussion. Any other comments from staff?
Unless, unless there's enough, you know, I have no other comments.
Okay, well, if the discussion is closed, I guess that brings us to voting on this application. So, do I hear? Well, let me try, let me try our minds. Kevin, how are you feeling about this application? Do you, are you feeling like you're moving towards approval or?
Well, 100%, I'm fine. I'm good to approve.
Yeah.
As, as written, it looks pretty well. I don't think I.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter now. Yeah, give me a motion. Sorry, I'm, I'm.
I'll make a motion that we approve the permit for
nine.
Thank you, nine Barton Park Road to fill the two by two area of poorly drained soils at the location of their ground by the ground.
Aboveground.
Aboveground pool, thank you, as outlined and stated in the draft of resolution of approval that was presented to us tonight, is that work?
Based on?
Based on. Uh, you want me to read the whole thing?
You don't have to.
Based on the.
You don't have to read the reasons, but you have to say how many there are.
Based on the two reasons as outlined.
Okay, and how many conditions are there?
From guidelines. Eight?
Yes.
Yeah, with eight conditions. Good.
Hey, we have a motion on the table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You guys still.
I, I'm going to tune out, so, uh, have a great rest of the meeting.
Have a lovely Thanksgiving. Thank you for all your time.
Absolutely. Good night.
Good night. All right, that concludes old business. No, that concludes, that concludes new, that concludes new business, ladies and gentlemen.
Well, oh, yeah, it would help if I had one of these give out during the, I'm sorry. It's a little late now.
Oh, that's okay.
It's the actual agenda.
She's guiding us along.
I am, I'm doing my, my very, very best. All right, that brings us to the business meeting portion of our agenda this evening. Uh, we have our regular meeting minutes for approval from 10:28. Do I hear a motion to approve those?
Motion made.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second, Sarah.
Okay, Kevin, there's a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
I haven't read the minutes, but I'm staying.
Yes.
I wasn't able to access this.
Yes, you may. So abstaining, aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And next we have approval of our special meeting minutes from 10:26. Do I hear a motion to approve those eight minutes? Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah.
Special meeting minutes? Yeah.
What are, that was the.
That was our sidewalk.
Yes.
Yeah, I have to, I have to abstain.
Okay, no problem, Kevin. Thank you.
And was there something about tabling this or without?
We're.
Yes, we had to table it from the last.
Last.
Right.
Because they had not been posted yet.
Cool.
Did you, were you able to review them?
I was at the sidewalk. I wasn't able to review the minutes.
They're filed in the clerk's office, so if, if you guys want me to resend those again, not a problem. I can do that.
Should we do that if we don't have enough people to vote on this tonight?
Well, you have your two things.
Kevin's going to abstain.
Okay, yeah.
I assume because we haven't had a chance to review it, so.
If you want to table it to December 9th, not a problem.
That's fine. We'll go ahead and table that till, till our next meeting.
Sure.
Thank you so much, Dave. All right, and then that brings us to our third item on the business meeting, which is the approval of the invoice for Kekiwak.
That would be $100 for Vice Chairman Jordan, Jordan to have attended the Kekiwak Annual Conference that was held this past November 16th. Uh, and that money would be reimbursed to him from this Commission's education account.
Okay.
Make a motion to pay the $100 invoice from Kekiwak.
Thank you so much. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll entertain a vote. All in favor? We signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Not in conflict.
Yep, all right, motion passes. And that brings us to our staff report.
Uh, no, there's one.
We have an invoice.
The invoice, yeah, sorry.
Gotcha.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's, it's on the.
On my other thing. I apologize. It does not bring us to our. We are still in the business meeting. Thank you. Yep, we have an invoice from First Connecticut Media Group for the Danbury News Terms in the amount of $496. Thank you, Nico. Do I hear a motion?
So me?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. All right, now I believe we are ready to move into the staff report.
Yes, thank you. A couple of housekeeping items of note. The first is the resignation of Mr. Paul Improta. He resigned from this Commission effective early October. Mr. Carter and the other selectmen will have to make an appointment from, unless from, committed to, or remaining with Mr. Improta's, thereby Mr. Taylor's term. I'll let you know what progress he makes with that. Um, there are some other events coming up for this Commission at their next meeting on December 9th because we bumped that up early. Uh, the first, your annual election of officers. I took the liberty of borrowing a lot of language from Todd Simmsberry. Just as general rules for you guys for how that works, Kevin, I'll get this sent to you electronically.
Thank you.
The Commissioners too. But just keep in mind, you guys have to, uh, your election for your Chair, your Vice Chair and your Secretary. And to decide on your schedule for your next calendar year, 2025. Hope the Clerk has the outlook states filed before January. Um, I, I know there's something else. I, I wish I had better recall.
Something else? Um, we had, do you mean? Um, we have, do you mean something else for staff?
Yes.
Yeah, you were gonna give us an update on number seven Rockwell Road?
Yes, no. Uh, I I I I continue to, at 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 the request of a Bethel resident, uh, I continue to leave this on the agenda so that way it's it's a reminder and a placeholder so that when the day comes that uh, the commission or the uh, uh, the court uh, actually follows through the proceedings for arguments and and what have getting a uh, brief put together, let you know, and Attorney Andrews obviously would participate in this or. Uh.
I think possibly Melanie O'Brien, Attorney O'Brien.
Yes, that's 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 correct, as as needed. Um, uh, uh, Attorney Andrews was the one that was representing the commission during that application process, and he was the one that uh, uh, the commission part took an executive session. So.
Yeah, oh, no, I'm not.
Yeah, yeah.
Trying to exclude him in any way.
Um, but uh, it it's it's uh, Melanie's discretion to say, okay, this is something that is really appropriate.
She had joined us for one of the meetings, so I was just looping in to see if she was.
That's right, that's right, I think that's all I had, unless.
No, you also have reviewing um, the CACUAC meeting?
Oh, yes.
Discussion discussion?
Uh, well, so this was just gonna be a a segue into uh, Mr. Jordan's experience to, because I I believe he did attend that meeting. Um, it was held two Saturdays ago in in Bristol, hopefully it was a good experience for him.
I thought it was wonderful, it was a nice day, um. I attended uh, the workshops, one, two, and three at different um, time intervals throughout the day. And.
Did you see Janet Brooks?
Aye. No.
Or how about Mark Brands?
Uh, probably, Dave, I don't know who the people are.
You would, you would, you would, you would remember who they were.
Uh, there's so many.
George Clinton, did you see George Clinton?
It's a big event, there were a lot of state representatives, a lot of um, different the workshops, people working. Not private sector stuff, I don't know who the speakers are, they're from these like working groups from the state.
Here's a question for you. When you, when you broke out of the men conference room, did you go into a room that was really big or one that was really small?
My first one, the the ones I had, I had a difficult time choosing because you had to choose, there were three different tracks.
Yes.
Kind of throughout the day, one of them had to do with maybe like ru- rules and regulations.
Yep.
One was um, I forget all the tracks now. Um, one was maybe climate resilience, I think was a track.
Yep.
Uh, it seemed like, and rivers, I don't know what the other ones, but I ended up signing up for um, for what it's worth, a roadmap for Connecticut Climate Resilience, Session Two. Wetlands Law. They with Q and A session and.
That was with Janet Brooks.
Yeah, and then Session Three, River Systems Preparing Quarters and Stormwater Management.
Yes.
Um, I dipped in and out a couple because I was interested in so much of the topic from the bureau there that I couldn't go to all of them.
Yeah.
So I put two of them, I kind of hedged, I thought that the it was going in the right direction for what I was trying to study right now. Um. But it was uh, it was super informative and um, and like food for a hungry mind, I don't know, and there were lots of vendors there, obviously.
Yeah, yeah.
Interested in in. I don't know, was it, we choose that kind of? But that's probably the best thing about it is is was getting um, to kind of find like-minded people and know that, for me anyway, that I sometimes I feel a little isolated or alone in the world of like conservation and wetlands, um. Management.
Yeah, this, this.
And it's people who are into it, right? And they're here for the long haul, they're here for the state, they're here for the veteran of of the functioning and oh, you know, it's so complex, like there is all these other topics.
Yeah.
Um, but it's always a little overwhelming too.
Yeah, there, there are, there are a hundred and sixty-seven, I think, other boards in the state that are navigating the same things that you guys are.
Yeah.
A- and i- it it feels sometimes that like you're in a vacuum because you don't get to talk to the all those people all the time about what they do, you're so focused on your own stuff. Um, so i- it's, it's very frustrating to to be in in a room.
Did we there, I I don't even know if I would be able to.
I I was not at this most recent one, but I have been to it's either three or four of them at least at this point. Uh.
Yeah, I go back.
And and they've all been uh, they've all been excellent discussions for for what this board does or or what wetlands and conservation boards can do. Uh, a- a- and it's always very insightful to get uh, new material. E- even if you think you've heard it before, there's always something new to to be had there. And the little special presentations they do for like Sessions A or one or uh, C or three or however they do it now, uh, it's always great, so I'm I'm glad you went.
Yeah, um, thank you for encouraging us to go.
You're welcome.
If if I if I had one concrete takeaway or thing to share with you guys that of an actual resource that I found was um, we post, you recently posted it on the our, the acts, our education materials on the drive.
Yes.
And it was one of those West Cog documents toward the bottom of the hyperlinks.
Yes.
Um. And it was the key, it was West Cog is the Western Connecticut Council of Governments.
That's right, you got it.
They have put together some really tight, um, you know, kind of s- state.
State.
Um, or funnel channels and opposition, and this one was involving uh, it's in this case, place for repairing corridors.
Yep.
Uh, in particular, but there's all sorts of stuff that we could a lot of reading, but that's one of the ones that I'm gonna be focusing on for wanting to um, continue our discussion about regulation. I heard the. It's kind of hyperlinks, but there's another West Cog thing above it that says that was like the state of, it was like evaluating Connecticut inland wetland.
Yes.
The first link, and it's not all the same link, so if you want to see the the next one, ninety-one pages, but I think it's gonna be good stuff for our review process, which I'm still working here.
Yeah.
But I didn't.
It would be a lot.
Those two West Cog documents.
It would be a lot to try to read through all at once, but in whatever leisure time you guys have and you're looking for, I know.
I know, it's. But those are good, anyway, sorry, that's great.
So. And that's, that's really all I have for you guys today.
Well, we also have regulations reviewing, oh, uh, from the staff reports.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Our next meeting is December ninth?
That's correct.
I will not be in touch with the audience. Out of the company.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Uh, so that brings us to commission comments. Have a discussion about those regulations.
Hmm, I kind of slipped my piece for tonight, but that was where I wanted to direct our focus on those two best arguments to sort of on repairing quarters, and then you ended up putting up new things involving or definitions of clear putting, I noticed, and.
Yes.
And a couple of different, from a couple of different towns.
I I I am slowly but surely piecing together the requests that you guys have made a few months ago, just looking into definitions and just other reference material as far as regulations go. Um, if there's anything else you you want me to investigate for you, just let me know, and I will add it there. Um, it's it's meant to be a repository for you all to come back to whenever the. For the relations, sex players.
A question.
Yeah.
Everyone will want to throw rotten tomatoes at my face for asking. Um, when we do finally really embark in this discussion.
Uh huh.
I have a feeling it's gonna continue to be difficult to get it in during our regular meetings because we have a lot of business to get through frequently.
Sure.
So, yep, Pat is reaching into his pocket for the tomatoes as we speak.
No, I agree with you, I think you're gonna say.
Um, would it be appropriate for us to have conversations around adding a special meeting to review these things?
If if that's what the commission wants to do, then that's what the commission wants to do, I'm fine with that, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, so then let's, let's continue that discussion maybe um, at our next meeting in December or possibly in January.
Yes.
And I obviously, if if we uh, for whatever reason, like don't have a meeting, and maybe we just keep it.
Absolutely.
For that.
Sure, yeah.
For.
But we are about to go into the spring season when when to get there. That that sounds great, I'm just not sure how feasible that will be. Yeah, this is probably when we start to really get into high gear.
This year was new territory for this board in the sense that the time of the year that you were, you would typically be busy, you were not. And the time of year that you weren't busy, you were. I I I don't know what is prompting that shift? How long, say it this way, I think it's just a nickel from.
It is, it's just distracting.
That's okay.
I keep thinking you're trying to project.
Uh, I I uh, I, I don't know.
Usually year.
Yeah. I, I will make a point for this commission if if there isn't anything on the agenda, just hold it anyway, because worst case scenario, you guys are here for five or ten minutes to do your business items, and then you majority.
That sounds great, and always set up the agenda in advance anyway, so.
Correct.
We'll know whether we should come and prepare for a more lengthy discussion.
Yes.
Yep. Sounds good. Kevin, any comments that you wanted to add to that conversation? I want to make sure you're being heard over there.
No, no, I'm being, I'm I'm genuinely listening, I'm nothing to add, I I'm in agreement that I think uh, time set aside for discussions of the nature is good, and when it comes to the seasonality[1717.20]